Can all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice our own.
We have our invocation this evening by Bob Keller, our police chaplain.
Thank you, sir. Let's all bow and have a word of prayer, shall we? Our Father in Heaven, we thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. We thank you for our mayor and our council members and their diligence and doing the right thing tonight, because I know they will. But, Lord, I do pray that you would continue to give them the wisdom that they need to be able to make the decisions they need to make tonight, and whatever is covered, that you would bless it, and that we would all sense your presence. And, Lord, while I'm praying, I can't leave out our police officers of Santa Ana PD. As they're out there protecting us and guarding our streets and making sure everything are safe, we pray for their safety tonight, and we pray for their well-being and their protection. Again, Lord, lead and guide in this meeting tonight, for we ask it in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Chaplain. You may be seated. Councilman Jose Solario, if you can proceed. Madam City Attorney, do we have anything to report out of closed session?
Mayor and members of the council, we only have one reportable action item. That is Item A under existing litigation. In that matter, the city council, by a four-to-one vote, with Councilmember Iglesias voting no, approved the settlement of $280,000. That's all the reportable action I have.
Thank you. Now I turn the floor over to Councilmember Solario, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to invite up some of our fantastic leaders that we have in town, all soccer league presidents. As you all know, soccer's big worldwide, and it's big here in San Ana. I'm pleased to recognize some of these major youth soccer leagues that we have. And we may or may not have all the soccer league presidents here, but I will recognize them all. We have representatives from the California Youth Soccer League. Uriel Chavez is their leader. From the Azteca League, we have Alfredo Gomez. From Team Ninety League, we have Pedro Magallón. Representing Orange County Youth Soccer League, Juan Mejía. And I know one person is not here, but another great person, Jesús Rodríguez, with B Soccer League. All great people and organizations. We have a lot of young people in San Ana, and one of the best sports for anybody to play is soccer. And this community loves soccer, so I want to talk about all their contributions to the community. As we know, sports, including soccer, has a significant impact on the lives and particularly the health, and positive influences on our youth. It's a popular sport. We have many leagues that work with literally hundreds and thousands of young people. We have these committed presidents of these youth soccer leagues that many have been doing it for 10, 20 years. So it's really a lifelong commitment that they have to the kids, the sport, and the community. For example, Uriel Chavez with the California Youth Soccer League. It was a league started in 1985. In partnership with the Santa Ana Unified School District, the league services over 2,400 players, 85% of which are San Ana residents. We have, from the Azteca League, we have Alfredo Gomez, who leads that, but his son, Brian Islas, is also here. That group started 10 years later, in 95, and they have 109 active soccer teams involving over 1,400 youth and adult players, ages four to 18. Like most of these leagues, they serve largely low socioeconomic families with low incomes. And then we have Pedro Magallón, who I've known for some time, and it says here he started as the youngest elected director at the age of 17. And he started a league that was then known as the San Ana Youth Soccer Association, CESA, in 1994. Since then, to kind of be hip with the times, they changed the name to Team Ninety, which does sound fun and exciting, and also because they have started offering services in other sports areas. We also have the Olympic Youth Soccer League, led by Juan Mejía. This league was founded in 2000, represents over 150 teams, and they work very closely with the city of San Ana and other local jurisdictions. And Jesús Rodríguez, that previously was affiliated with another group, he now has his own league and academy called the B Soccer League and Academy, equal leadership in terms of the number of years in youth. On behalf of the city of San Ana, it's my honor to recognize them, because also if they weren't providing these services, it would put more pressure on the city to provide such services for our youth. So we are very grateful. I do have some certificates that we'll hand out, but if we can have maybe some quick words from one or all, especially because we don't have a lot of presentations, let's do so. And why don't we start with Pedro, and then you can introduce the others.
Good evening, everybody, to Mayor, City Council, Jose Solario. I just want to share something with you guys real quick. First time I spoke on one of these mics, I was 15 years old. And we were here advocating for youth sports, because we didn't have the ability to be able to use some of our fields. They were not being used. There was a lot of gang members, so they wouldn't allow us to be in certain areas of the city at that time. But everything has grown so much in sports and everything. I met Jose Solario when he was working here in the city, not as a politician or anything. He's one of the first ones, together with the mayor, Mr. Miguel Pulido, who started opening the doors for us to be able to use some of these fields. For the last 20-something years, we've been playing soccer and baseball fields, because there's no more space. You know, this is it. Santa Ana has grown as much as it has. But we're grateful for all that. We're grateful for the city of San Ana has opened the doors for sports in all areas, because we're fighting for everybody. When they created KOFU, it was a wonderful organization, because it helped every sport to speak their mind, to advocate for themselves, and that's why Santa Ana is able to provide every single kind of sport, for boys and girls, from ages three, four years old, all the way to 19. So hopefully, we keep doing the great work, and thank you for everything.
You'd like to speak?
Good evening. I'm Brian Islas from Azteca Youth Soccer League. And basically, we'd like to thank the city of San Ana, because without their facilities, we wouldn't be able to do our work, which is help out the community. And our league consists of teams from the age of, players from the age of four up to 18. We have a women's open division and a men's open division. And thanks to the city, we continue to work hard each and every day. And I just want to thank the mayor and thank everyone here on behalf of Azteca Youth Soccer League. Thank you.
Buenas noches. Soy el representante del presidente de la Liga Olímpica. Voy a hablar en español. Estamos muy contentos y agradecidos con la Ciudad de Santana por apoyar a los niños. Tenemos la liga de niños de tres a cuatro años arriba hasta 18. Tenemos también adultos, hombres y mujeres. Los adultos, tenemos muchachos muy jóvenes que están en las ligas de adultos de 18 a 25 años, la mayoría. Son jóvenes que necesitan el apoyo de todos para que estos muchachos estén bien en los caminos que deben de estar, para evitar problemas en las calles. Así es que gracias por el apoyo a la Ciudad de Santana y a todos del concilio. Estamos agradecidos con ellos y esperamos que nos sigan apoyando, a seguir adelante, apoyando a los niños, jóvenes, y así también los adultos.
A little bit of a summary of the translation. Juan Mejía, he is with the Olympic Youth Soccer League. They're proud to be here. They appreciate the council's support. They work with youth as young as three, and they're mainly youth-oriented, but they do have some adult leagues as well. It helps the kids, but also keeps them off the street and keeps our city safe. So they're thankful to the mayor and the council. So on behalf of a grateful council and city, let's give them a big round of applause.
If I may.
Yes.
Okay. Councilmember Solario, I just want to thank you two for acknowledging them, because, you know, when I was on the school board, too, we also had them use our facilities and stuff, and they would be providing the services that our youth needed. So I want to thank you for bringing them up and recognizing them. So I was going to ask you if I could also take a picture with them? Okay.
And any other council members?
No, we all got it. Vamos.
We don't have any other presentations.
There you go.
Ladies, right here. There you go. Is that beautiful? Madam Clerk, do we have any items that people wish to address this on?
We do not.
Okay. I just want to pull Item 39A for separate discussion. Any other items by council members? If not, I would entertain a motion on the balance.
Motion approved.
Second. Any discussion? If not, those in favor, please press green.
I have, go ahead. I just had a comment with item, or should I pull it then?
Pull it.
39B.
39B is now pulled. We're voting on the balance. You got to vote again. Let's, well, can we just say he was green?
Yeah.
He was green on that vote, right?
Yes.
Okay, so let's, all right, so what's the next item? Is it 39, or what was your item?
B, but you also...
I, 39A. On 39A, I simply want to kind of request that through staff, when we actually do this, may we invite Roger Penske out, maybe have a ceremony or something. Part of what happened is he came into the auto mall a few years ago, and it's gone really, really, really well. Roger Penske coming out there, you know, he bought out Crevee A, then they've got the Mini Coupe, and now there's other dealerships, about seven. I was out there with Alpera Jakie, as he runs Crevee BMW for Roger Penske, and I suggested, why can't one of these streets be named after Roger Penske? And they loved the idea. It's like, yeah, let's do it, you know, because out in the auto mall, you have a few side streets. So all we're doing is we're naming one of those side streets Roger Penske Drive. And so I think we ought to invite him. He comes out periodically. We ought to have a little unveiling ceremony or something, get a little bit of publicity, and really thank the Penske Organization, because they're bringing a lot of tax dollars to San Ana. You know, that auto mall, I believe, is now one of the top in the country, and we just ought to be as close as we can to them, encourage more growth in business, continue to do well. And I think this is a symbolic action that we're taking by naming one of those drives at the auto mall, San Ana Auto Mall, Roger Penske Drive. So with that, I'd like to move approval.
There's also, make a motion approve with a quick comment.
Go ahead.
They also have a museum going on in the...
Yes, they do.
Yeah.
And they're going to be bringing some of the Indy 500 races. I think Roger Penske and their group have won more races in NASCAR, in Indy, in Formula One. It's an amazing machine that they've built, and I think we're blessed to have them here in our city and being so active here in town. So we have a motion and a second. Those in favor, please press green. How'd you do that?
Quick blue from red to green.
Did you see what you did?
No, I didn't.
Benialosa, when it came up, he was red, and then all of a sudden, he switched it to green, and now it's just record green, okay?
Record green.
But did you see the red?
I did.
You saw it?
I looked down.
You saw it?
I didn't look down when I pushed, but I pushed the red, but I switched the red. Okay.
It's a ghost or something.
He's very fast. Very. It only matters the way it sultonly recorded. You have the next item, Councilman Benialosa.
Yeah, 39B, approve renaming the skate park at Centennial Park. Pat McQuiggin's skate park, which I'm completely in support of. Thank you, Mayor Protem Villegas, for bringing this forward. But I just wanted to see if city manager and Parks and Rec staff with this. If anyone has been to that skate park lately, it's not very pleasant. You know, covered in graffiti and just the activity that goes on, aside from skateboarding. I, you know, if we're going to name it after Pat McQuiggin, all my respects to her, God bless her, but, you know, let's, you know, clean it up a little bit, maybe, I don't know, if we could find some dollars somewhere to do some kind of maintenance on the park, you know, to not just name it after her, because it is a little bit of a negative spot in that park. Just kind of clean it up, and maybe with the new security that's going to be coming in, make sure that that's part of the constant, you know, enforcement area, just to really, you know, not just name it after her, but bring some respect to it as well with that. With that said, that's all I have to say, Mr. Mayor.
I'd love to second that motion. I know others want to speak, although I'll speak in a moment, but I just want to state that I had the privilege of attending her funeral. I know Councilman Jose Solario was there as well, and it was very nice. We had community leaders, lots of former council members, current council members. Councilman Sarmiento was there as well, former Councilman Claudia Alvarez, Lisa Mills, Tom Lutz, Alberta Christie. And it was a good tribute to Pat McQuiggin for all she did for the city. So with that, I know there were other comments. Councilman Solario?
Yes, thank you. I do want to thank staff for bringing this forward. At the last council meeting, several of us made this recommendation. I was there when Pat and I or others were working on the skate park, and I see Ron Ono and others from parking in the audience. I mean, Councilmember McQuiggin went in all in on the project, and even though, you know, she was a senior at the time, she was working with all these youngsters. The mayor eloquently said the other day, she was learning, you know, the names of the moves, you know, what kind of...
Had a grind.
You know, had a grind, what type of obstacles to set up, you know, what type of materials, you know, all the cool people that were in the industry, you know, because there are some big brand names, and she led that, made it happen. And, you know, like any project, there were, you know, folks in the community that didn't want it, but she kept leading forward and made it happen, and so this is very deserving.
So I just wanted to say thank you for bringing it up, Mayor Protem Villegas, in renaming the park. But I was all under the impression that it was always Pat McQuiggin's skate park, because I live on the outside Ward 6. Centennial Park is, you know, in my neighborhood. And, but when I found out it wasn't, then I was like, okay, I know, it's good for us to give her that respect and that tribute. But I was wondering, what kind of sign are we going to have? Because the sign itself right now, where it says skate park, is, I think it's cement or something like that, is not really nice looking. And I know that there's, the kids use it, and it's a great opportunity for them to interact with each other. But, too, we also have to have more oversight and security provided in that area, because just recently, I believe, last week, there was a kid who was assaulted, and he was beat up close to that area in Centennial Park. So, you know, aside from, you know, giving this tribute to her, let's try to see how we can have more security there, so we won't be facing that. So the kids can enjoy it, because it's nice. But then again, too, we have to make sure that we address, you know, the constant issue that we have about the homeless issue, because also, too, that tends to happen. So if you could kind of share if there's already proposed type of signage, let's do a nice one, because it does get graffitied on constantly on that side of town, so something that's not, that will withstand that treatment.
Certainly, Councilmember. And you're right, the current sign is kind of a concrete wall with blue writing on it. So as part of this staff report, we are allocating $11,000 to do a brand-new sign that will honor her memory with her name on it. I certainly can share when we have the conceptual drawings with the entire council.
So with that, I believe we have a motion and a second. Those in favor, please press green. Unanimous. Madam Clerk, are we now on to our business calendar?
Yes.
I would take a motion on Item 55A. We're opposing the establishment of a green needle and syringe exchange program.
Move the item.
Those in favor, please press green. Item 68, this is to approve a second reading.
Move the item.
We have speakers, okay, I'll second it, but let's, we have some speakers. Lucero Garcia, come on down and speak on Item 68, followed by Anna Ursua from Thrive San Ana, followed by Luis Sarmiento. Luis already pledged to support your project, so you don't need a bunch of speeches. Isabel Muñiz, go ahead, Anna.
Hi, good evening. My name is Anna Ursua. I work with the San Ana Building Healthy Communities, and I'm also on the board of Thrive. I am the president. As you know, Thrive Santana is a community land trust, recently formed in 2016, as an organization that can, a membership organization that can represent and speak along with community residents about community development in our city. Today, we're coming before you to request an extension on an exclusive negotiating agreement we already have with the city of Santana. We've been making a lot of progress on all of the milestones, and are looking forward to completing it as soon as possible. We are requiring an extension at this time, and I believe we've reached out to all of you to have conversations about, and we're happy to answer any questions. We're really excited about this project, as it'll be the first of its kind. We're proposing an urban micro-farm that will offer accessible locally grown food.
How much of an extension do you need, Anna?
So it's a six-month extension. We hope to bring things back sooner than that, but I believe it'll go through March.
Okay.
And so we're looking forward to your support. I hear that the item might be moved and continued, but it's...
We did a motion and a second, so I'm hopeful we can...
And we'll, we'll motion a second for a six-month continuance.
Great, thank you very much.
If we do that, can we save all the speakers that are going to say the same thing?
I'm not sure. I think folks are looking forward to it. But I do have a letter here on behalf of San Ana Building Healthy Communities.
Thank you. All right. Yeah, let, those in favor of six months, please press green.
But I think they wanted to speak.
I know. If they still want to speak, I'll still bring them up, but I just, if we're supportive and they're all supportive, may we save a little bit of time.
Or maybe Luis Sarmiento can just wrap, you know, wrap it up for the group.
Luis, can you speak on behalf of the group? We're about to vote yes. Remember that.
Okay. Just one clarification, real quick. The six-month extension or second ENA is the vote that you're approving?
You're asking for more time. We're wanting to give you more time.
Well, we're supporting the staff recommendation that's on the agenda, so you're aware of it. No surprise.
In that case, just thank you, thank you very much. If it's okay with you to hear from speakers from the community...
If they all are going to ask for more time, and we're giving you more time...
We do appreciate that. On my turn, I just wanted to thank you all. It's been really great to work with staff. A big part of this process is for community members to be engaged and learn about the development process, and we have been doing that, and so thank you for that opportunity.
The best engagement is going to be when you get the land and you're doing your micro-farm.
That's right.
That'll be the reality.
Yeah, thank you.
So with that, thank you, Luis. So those in favor, please press green. Luis, can you tell them you convinced us and that it's unanimous? So congratulations. Congratulations. Luis nos convenció a todos que votáramos a favor.
People would feel like speaking?
No.
Gracias. Thank you. Vayan a festejar. Una fiesta en la casa de Luis. All right, next item, Madam Clerk. This is an appropriate adjustment to carry over unspent amounts from fiscal year 2018, '19 to '1920.
Motion approved.
Second. Those in favor, please. Question, go ahead.
Pressing the wrong button.
No, it's okay to press green, and then you answer a question.
Okay. Okay, so my question for you, Christine, is, okay, we're talking about appropriating money that went unspent. So just for clarification, where was this money allocated to last year that we're moving it from, which department?
Councilmember, attached to the staff report is a detailed listing of all of that.
I can't hear you, I'm sorry.
So attached to the staff report is a detailed listing of the monies. So you're really, you're doing four actions with the staff report. One, you're lowering the budget from last year, because we didn't spend it, and then you're carrying over the amounts to increase the budget for this year, so we can spend it, because it's encumbered, and we're already in the process of spending it. And then the other thing that you are doing with this particular staff report is, we had over-revenue performance last year, so we have some additional dollars to allocate, and we're allocating that. But I know it's pretty hard to read the small print of the attachment. I can certainly have the finance director come up if you would like, and she could probably summarize some of the bigger pots of money that are being carried over.
So what I would like to know is, why do we have, it's a huge amount, if you think about it, four-point millions, a lot of money to have unspent that we had allocated, but how much money was it more in revenues that you said, that money that came in that we weren't anticipating when we approved the budget?
So we're still closing out last fiscal year. It won't be completely closed out until after our audit, which won't take place until November. But our best estimate right now is over-performance of about $5 million. Conservatively, we're only proposing that you allocate $4 million, and you program that for the current year, and then we'll have the final numbers in a couple of months, and we may be able to come back to you to see if there's any other areas you would like to allocate additional dollars for.
So I see that you recommended different amounts for quality of life, $1 million, and then $2 million for roadway maintenance, so then that leaves $1 million for the general fund.
So the $4 million, what we're recommending, as you said, is $2 million to a street maintenance, $1 million to homelessness efforts, and the other million, based on a request from the DIES at the time you adopted the budget, you requested if there were any additional dollars at the end of the year, that you wanted it to go to youth programming, so that's where the other million dollars is being recommended.
Okay, because right now, we have about $5 million, I think, already with the youth committee that they're looking at, so this will add to that, or is...
It would be in addition to the one-third of the cannabis money that I believe you're referring to?
Yes.
Yes, it would be in addition to it.
Okay, and I know that we haven't really set a plan on how we're going to be spending that money. One thing that was brought up today to us, Councilmember Benialosa and myself, we met with some community members, we're talking about the cannabis money and, you know, the programs that we're going to be implementing. One thing that I would like to see is that, when are we going to start talking about, you know, like the DARE program, remember, like, don't drink and drive, and then so educational programs where kids won't be wanting to start even, you know, dealing with that drug? So are we having a component of education for them not to even start?
We are, and we certainly can get you more details on what we're planning for that. That was also a request from the Mayor Protem with the allocation of the one-third of the cannabis money, is he wanted to see it go to education efforts as well. So it is a part of the planned programming.
And how soon can you start that? Because it seems, I mean, I've been here nine months, and we haven't really done anything.
Well, the cannabis money just came in at the very end of last year, so I would say 30 days we should be able to tell you.
Okay, so in 30 days, I'll ask the same question, and you'll be able to...
Yes, I'll give you a 30-day time.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, with that, those in favor, please press green. Our next item.
Mr. Mayor, can I make one quick comment on that?
Absolutely, go ahead.
I do want to thank the city manager and staff from our budget committee, you know, the GEDABIC committee. We did know that there was going to be extra revenues and... the debt-a-bet committee. We did know that there was gonna be extra revenues, and initially it was gonna go a certain way, but I think they heard us that we need more money for homeless services, money for the youth, I mean, for the road maintenance effort, and on the cannabis money for the youth program. They were really short-changed in the past, and so although this looks like new money, it's really, you know, paying an older obligation. I think this is also great news because earlier in the year, on February, staff thought we might end the year 600,000 in the red, whereas now what we're hearing is we're gonna end the fiscal year four to five million in the black. And that's also after, you know, you know, other expenses that were unanticipated. So I think this is fabulous news.
Part of what a great city manager can do overnight. All right, with that, what's our next item?
65B has been requested by staff to be continued.
And how long was that continuance? 30 days?
Just until the next council meeting, sir.
Okay, so I would entertain a two-week, or a continuous to the next council meeting. 65B, correct?
Correct, 65B.
Well, what's the reason for that? I'm ready to support it. I think it's a good proposal.
I believe that we wanted to have Armiento present for the presentation, since he's worked a lot with the water.
It involves a water increase, and water's his thing, so out of respect for Vince, two weeks.
Fair enough, fair enough.
Two weeks. All right, so we have a motion by Solario, second by Mayor Pro Tem. Those in favor, press green.
Let's get it, right?
Two weeks, so Vince can be here. All right, our next item is item, would that be 80A, Madam Clerk? Public hearing, a proven update to the citizen participation plan for home investment partnerships program. Do we, as I open up the public hearing, do we have any speakers at which to address this item?
We do not. We have no correspondence for 75A.
We have no speakers. Anybody wanna come up right now? If not, I'll close the public hearing, bring it back to council. Is there a motion?
Move the item.
Those in favor, please press green. Motion carries. Now we're going on to item 80A. This is a joint session between the city council and the housing authority. Approve amended and restated affordable housing loans and subordination agreements for the rehabilitation of cornerstone apartments. We have a recommended action, both by the city council as well as the housing authority. Can I have a motion?
Move the item.
We have a question, go ahead.
Where is Cornerstone Housing?
Mini Street.
It's, it's several different, it's in the 800 block of Mini Street.
Okay. On Mike Fadden? Is that the one on Mike Fadden, or on Edinger? Which one?
I believe Mike Fadden.
Edinger and Mini, near Standard.
It's actually, address is 805, 810, 815, 816, 25, 828, 835, and 904 South Mini Street.
Near Madison Park, just to the immediate, to the immediate east of Madison Park.
By Madison Park?
Yeah, to the immediate east of Mini Street, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Those in favor, please press green.
Mayor, for clarification, who was the second?
I was the second.
Thank you.
Do you know who was the first?
Councilmember Solario.
Yes, just a test. All right, motion carries. I believe we're on item 85A.
And the city clerk passed. She got the name right, so good job.
So Councilman Solario, let's start with you.
On what item are we now?
85A.
Oh, 85A. Just wanted to have a general conversation with my colleagues. We do have a code on the books regarding recreational vehicles, affectionately known as, you know, 10-89, which essentially says you can't live in recreational vehicles or other vehicles on public city streets. We have enforced it. It is enforceable, but we do think that it's not up to the best standard and practices on how to regulate recreational vehicles. I think the city attorney's office and others have seen what kind of the, the best in the class are on how to regulate recreational vehicles, which really should be more about length, height, and, and other things. So I am hopeful that staff can bring an updated resolution so that we have something that is not just enforceable, but that would hold up in court if there is an issue. And I'm bringing this forward because there's just a number of constituents throughout the city that wanna see enforcement of the existing RV code. And if not, we just need to very quickly update it with, with a new code, and, you know, maybe our city attorney can give us an update on what the, you know, the legal case studies are with respect to RVs, and, and best, best standard, or our city attorney maybe can answer that.
Certainly, sir. We have prepared an ordinance that would amend and strengthen our municipal code that would allow us to enforce it. The code that we currently have on the books, the 1089 section that you're referring to, there was a state case and some case law that would make it really hard, difficult for us to enforce the way that it is worded, as you mentioned. So this new ordinance will focus on the size of the vehicles as opposed to focusing on homelessness, which is what the state case doesn't allow you to focus on. But with it, we're hoping to bring it forward to you at the very next council meeting for its introduction.
That would be fantastic. You know, also, even though I do think, you know, we have been enforcing and could the existing, a key element says that they're living in there, and so then you gotta prove that, which means we gotta have staff monitor it multiple days, and that's just too time-intensive as well. So I think the new standard is clear and fair, and I'm pleased to hear that staff's gonna bring that forward in a couple of weeks.
Thank you. Any more discussion? If not, yes, Councilor Iglesias.
When, in, in reading this, I want to thank you, Councilmember Solario, for bringing it up as one of a, you know, an item for discussion. I had already spoke to our city manager and our chief, because this is something that is affecting our community, and not only with RVs. So my question will go beyond just the RVs. I know there's a lot of vans that park in our neighborhoods that people are living in there, and also we have regular vehicles, cars, that stay three, four days, and then they just move a little bit because, you know, once they're tagged, then they're, they just move a few inches, and then they're, they're, they're okay. Is there anything that we could do other than, because I know, like you were saying, the, the state has really, I guess, held us hostage in a way to, to the homeless. And what we wanna do is, for the security and also for the quality of life for our residents, not only RVs, but vans and cars, for us to enforce something of like, maybe no parking overnight. How is, how can we do that as a city to provide something to our residents? And, and I know I was talking to you about the no, I guess, the, the permit parking. And one of the things that I hear from a lot of the residents, they may want permit parking, but why is it that as residents, we have to pay in order for us to use our, our parking in front of our house versus a person that, you know, that doesn't reside in our neighborhood gets their free parking every night? So is there any way with the dollars that we have and things that, you know, the extra money that we're, we're seeing that we're not spending, can we make it more affordable for, for residents to be able to have the, the permit parking in, in their neighborhoods? Because I know that's, it's a, it's a big, even though it may not sound a lot to you, $60 a year, but it is something for individuals, is I, I can't, I can't afford, you know, anything more than what I'm already paying for my rent. So is that something to, I'd be happy to see if, you know, we could add, not just the RVs, but if we could add the cars and the vans and all that, that would be something that would be also a win for our community.
Well, Councilmember, you're absolutely correct. The, the appropriate way for the vehicles, and I can defer to the city attorney on exactly what the, the state law says, but the permit parking would be the, the only avenue that we could do that. And we do have a streamlined process, but you're right, there are costs associated with it. So I can certainly explore if maybe there's a way that we could put some, like a grant for certain neighborhoods if they wanna implement permit parking to see if we can lower the price. The costs that we do pass on are really the cost associated with processing the permits and going through the, the procedures necessary to implement the permit parking. But I'd be happy to explore that.
And, and, Mayor and councilmembers, if I may, so what we took a look at, knowing and anticipating some of these questions, is a case that was decided in 2014. It was a federal case. And in that case, the court held that the city and police officers could not enforce an ordinance that prohibited one using their vehicle as living quarters. And that was a case involving the city of Los Angeles. We did do some additional research, and we found that very recently, the city of LA has actually come up with a really creative way of addressing the situation. We don't know yet whether that way will be upheld by a court. I heard one of the things that Councilmember Solario said is I'd like to see regulations that are not only enforceable, but that we don't knowingly walk into a situation where we know we might be challenged. Because as you know, federal litigation's expensive, and if we lose, we pay attorney's fees. But I will take a closer look at what Los Angeles has done. I will mention to you that in the LA policy, they start off by saying, this is where you can reside in a vehicle. And they have identified portions and areas of their city and have published a map of where people are allowed to do it. And that may be how they're addressing the situation. I don't know if you're interested in having us take a look at that, but if you're not, that is the only alternative I could offer you. So I would say that I agree with the city manager, that if you're not willing to go in that direction, then we're gonna have to really rely on the permit parking as a way to address this issue.
I, I think that the general point here, we're talking largely about RVs, but we're talking about, you know, the whole set of class and issues. And, I mean, I'm sympathetic as well to, you know, people that are poor or homeless. But I do worry, and I think we all should rightfully so, about the environmental hazards of the waste that sometimes is just dumped on, on sidewalks and gutters, and we've had complaints about that. So we need a solution, and we need a solution that is, is gonna be not just enforceable, but that's gonna stand up in court. And so let's have staff give it their best shot, and again, starting with RVs, but with a broader set, and we can, you know, review that, you know, in the near future.
All right, so, Councilmember Peniallosa.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Councilmember Solario, for bringing this item forward. I know we've been having some conversations, mostly email Madam City Attorney or, and Madam City Manager, about just the different ways that we could address these, these numerous parking problems with the RVs and the overnight stays throughout the city. I know just in my neighborhood, we were dealing with that, with that vessel that had been parked on St. Andrew for a decade and was just being moved from one side of the street to the other. It wasn't an ice vessel either. It was, it was an eyesore, and causing a security, or a safety risk with the, with the oncoming traffic and creating a blind spot. But I know there were some things of how we could address these, you know, marking stalls throughout our streets where these problems occur, where we could go and enforce and ticket somebody who, who is not parked within the, the frame, which, which I'm, I'm happy to see, and I'm happy to see that we're moving forward with, looking at this ordinance. So now we could see that brought forward, that'd be appreciated. But it definitely is a concern, especially with our parks. I know that Memorial Park, for example, and, and, you know, Madison Park, they've installed those gates that we stopped the closing because nobody was opening them in the mornings, making it, you know, not available for our residents. But that's gonna change with the, the security guards that are coming at, at the end of this month. So those are all good, good steps forward, and let's, let's, let's stay on it. Thank you.
Go ahead, Councilmember.
So just, just to add, is, in the industrial areas, I know that's where we get a lot of the RV parkings, too. Over there by Centennial, by the, what's that called, the Orange County, the, the museum? The Heritage, what's it called, the historical museum? The one by Mitchell School. Heritage Museum. So there's a, there's a lot of industrial buildings there, and they have a lot of, you know, like cul-de-sacs, and a lot of the RVs are parked right there. So in those areas, I'm wondering if we can put like, no overnight parking. Is that something that we, also we can look into?
We certainly can research that for you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so, yeah, staff is clear on direction?
Yes, sir.
All right, very good. We're gonna, the mayor stepped out for a brief moment, so we will continue to, with item 85B. Councilmember Peniallosa, your item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. 85B was just to discuss and consider directing our city manager to direct staff to bring forward a resolution to oppose the Trump administration's and the Department of Homeland Security's gross and hateful change to the public charge rule, which will negatively impact Santa Ana's most vulnerable residents and the immigrant community. I am fully aware-
I will interrupt you real quick. I've-
Oh, okay.
-got to receive the speaker card, so if you bear with me one moment. We have Claudia Gómez-Guillermo from Congressman Correa's office. You could, welcome.
Thank you very much. So here on behalf of Congressman Lou Correa, who is asking the city council tonight to support Councilman Peniallosa on his measure and direct the city staff to draft a resolution in support of his efforts of fighting Donald Trump's public charge rule. So thank you very much, Councilman Peniallosa, for bringing this forward, and the congressman asked for the city of Santa Ana's help in helping him fight this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gómez-Guillermo. Councilmember Peniallosa, continue, and thank you. Sorry to interrupt you there on your item.
You're good, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. And just, I just want to let, let everybody know that I'm fully aware that the public charge rule has been existing for a long time, and, and I think it's a good thing. However, this expansion of it to include food stamps and Medicaid and, and have a different way of measuring, so have aggregated months, so it's a 12-month period. Now, if, for example, somebody were to have food stamps in Section 8 housing, that counts as two months, even though it's only, let's say I have it for six months, that would mean it's a 12-month period because it's two different items that you're receiving. I understand that, that these things are, are very, very beneficial to somebody's quality of life. Everything, when, when it comes to healthcare, food, and housing, it's something that, that isn't, it, it should be a God-given right to be able to access these things. And this, being on the census, Complete Count Committee, it got me thinking of, you know, the citizenship question on the, on the census. All these things that, that the federal government is, is trying to push forward, the only thing that it's doing is inciting fear amongst our community. A lot of these things, sometimes, yes, they won't be, they won't have, see a drastic change in our community, but the fear and the damage is there, and it's been done. I, just last week, I heard a mom, over the weekend at Fiesta Spatry, I was talking to different families, and one said, you know, I'm worried that my kid, you know, won't be able to get food, free, free lunch at school anymore. Because they, they're connecting the two with the, you know, food stamps and receiving free food. And, and, yeah, that's not the case, but the thing is that the missing component of this is that education aspect where we always fail to do. Government at all levels is educating the public on what is correct and what isn't. Same thing with the citizenship question on the census. That couldn't be used against somebody, but the damage is done, and you incite fear, and the community chooses to live, you know, scared to seek out these, these government, this government aid. Back in 2006, I was, you know, 17 years old, and was coming home from a water polo tournament. We had just lost CIF, me and my teammates at Tittleback High School. And right by my house, on Baker and St. Andrew, we were T-boned by a drunk driver about 10:30 at night. A car ended up on the, on the front lawn, and I had, I was sitting in the middle seat in the back. I had a broken clavicle, seven broken ribs, punctured lungs, punctured kidneys, a concussion, and I was scared. I was like, oh my God, the ambulances are coming. I don't have medical insurance. My mom doesn't have medical insurance. How am I gonna pay for this? I'm, keep in mind, I'm a U.S. citizen. My mom was a U.S. citizen. But I was still freaking out at the fact that we were gonna have to, to get some kind of aid. So I walked home. Before the ambulance got there, I was two blocks from my house. I jumped the fence. I, it wasn't until I was in the restroom and I saw blood in the toilet that I was like, you know what, I need to get to the hospital. So I went to the hospital, met my friends that were also in the wreck, and this was, I took that, made that decision because of fear. There was fear that, that, you know, things were gonna happen, you know. There were social workers in the emergency room. Long story short, $58,000 stay for three, four days, and my mom was freaking out about applying for med, for emergency Medicaid. She was like, I don't know, this is gonna be, you know. But we're U.S. citizens, and we were still freaking out. And that's the whole issue here, that we're causing, that, that fear, unnecessary fear is being trickling down to our community that shouldn't- being trickling down to our community that shouldn't be there. So, with that said, one of the things that the new rule would allow is even, it would allow immigration officers to consider English proficiency positive, or lack of English proficiency negative, medical conditions, food stamps, social aid. So all these problems are just going to keep our residents from seeking aid when they need it, when it's not necessary. So with that said, that's, those are all the comments I have.
Thank you, Councilmember. I think we lost a quorum here, so we're still-
Surprise, surprise.
Right. Okay, so, is there any other comments, Councilmember Solario?
Maybe we can go to the next item, and we could come back to this item.
Yeah, Mayor Protem, if we could just have a recess for a moment, until we have a quorum, so we can continue the meeting when we have a quorum.
That's all, okay. We'll recess for a few minutes.
Yes.
Madam City Attorney, did you-
Yeah, I can just say, if you continue to talk, we wouldn't take any minutes or record the activity or the discussion that you were having. She would have to actually say that you lost quorum. If you wanted to stay here and talk amongst yourselves, there are three of you, nothing prohibits you from doing that, but just know that your actions would not be considered as part of a formal meeting.
I will say, we will take a short recess.
All right, we're back on. Item 85B, a comment by Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, on the, thank you, Councilmember, for bringing this up. Usually I don't comment on federal issues, because this is being challenged in court. In the past, when I have a certain idea, or something I want to convey to the federal government, I write my own letter, like I have to the President and to both sides of the House and the Senate. For example, I wrote them a few letters regarding the government shutdown, because it was going to affect Santa Ana. So, that is also an option, but if you want to enter, if we want to have a letter from the council, then I'm willing to vote. So, thank you for bringing that up, just wanted to make note of that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, so with that, do we have a motion or a second?
Councilwoman Iglesias said she was, she was like, "I'll be right back and move to the restroom."
Why don't we go on to the next item, and we'll come back?
Okay.
Item 85C.
Mayor, we don't need a vote, we just need a direction.
Right, but typically, we need something for you guys to, because we can't have direction and no comment.
Well, the councilmember can give direction on what he wants, and if the-
But you kind of want to know, does the majority of the council concur or not?
Well, there's four of us, and if there was six, we'd still be a majority.
Right, but that's why I'm saying, a vote would be a good idea.
We normally, for example, wouldn't prepare a resolution unless we knew a majority of the council wanted us to prepare the resolution. So we don't look for formal action on 85As, and we do look for sort of this consensus, so that we know we're moving in the direction the majority of the council wants us to move in.
So, would I make a motion to move forward with coming, directing staff?
Why you do that? That's real clear and simple. I'll second your motion.
So I'll make a motion to direct staff to come up with a resolution to oppose the changes to the public charge rule, not necessarily against the existing, but all the changes that are being brought up by the current administration. So as, that would be the motion.
I have a comment, if you, if you, as long as, you know, I know in the past, this council's tried to condemn the President and all that. I don't believe in all that. If we want to oppose respectfully, then I'm with you.
So we're opposing respectfully, with respect?
Well, you know, it is the office of-
Sure, I oppose Mr. Donald Trump pretty please. I don't know, I don't know what you want, but that's sure.
It's just, the language is what I'm worried about.
Okay.
Well, when it comes back, you can review it.
Very good.
So if you concur, just press green, that way there's no ambiguity.
And this is for the resolution to oppose, right?
Right, right, what we just discussed.
Councilmember Iglesias, would you vote?
She can't decide. Four will do. Four, just four going to vote.
It's for 85B. It's just to direct staff to draft up a resolution to oppose-
It's okay if you weren't here, it's okay.
-the Trump administration and the Department of Homeland Security, their changes to the public charge rule, which will negatively impact Santa Ana.
So, okay, you may have a question?
Go ahead.
So, this is what we, I think this is a question that I had for you, was, you just wanted to make sure that our families, even though they're eligible, they're, they could apply without the fear of being, not applying for benefits, because they think that they're not going to be able to become residents? And also about the, like, the school lunches, you kind of mentioned something like that.
Right, that was a whole discussion. It's that the administration has been putting out policies that, a lot of times, are not necessary, and they're, all they do is incite fear in the community. One of the examples I used was the citizenship question in the Census. We all know that that information can't be used against our residents, but the damage was done. It was brought up, and that's, and our residents, the education component of it is not there. And that's where all levels of government failed to do, is educate the public on what is actually going to happen, what are the real consequences, how can you, can you still, another example I used was the mom that came up to me and said, you know, "I'm not going to let my kid use food, get free lunches at school anymore, because I don't want my US residency getting denied, because my kid was receiving free lunches." I'm like, "No, he's under 21, it doesn't apply to him." But that education component's not there.
So, can I just make like a friendly amendment or something to your, and I agree, I agree with what you're saying, because our, you know, our community here in Santa Ana, sometimes because of misinformation, they do operate in fear. So if, within the request, it's kind of like, can we have some of those misconceptions addressed, and also questions and responses to those fears that we may have in our community? And I think that would be, for me, that would be appropriate if we did something like that.
If I could comment on that, we already, we already are doing that. So the Sanctuary City Policy Group has requested that we do educational efforts to inform people of what exactly the new definition of a public charge entails, and what does impact them, and what does not impact them. So we're starting those education efforts.
Okay, and I would like to be part of those education efforts, so I know what's, you know, what's being said, so, okay.
All right, so that's accepted as a friendly amendment?
Well, I would still want to move forward with the resolution in opposition to the change.
What you're saying, yes.
I'm saying, yes, but with those friendly amendments too, you know, so we can say, we're going to be together at the table, so we can discuss and inform our community. The way it's been presented, I agree with you.
Okay, yeah.
It's not right, because our community doesn't understand. But if we could have that friendly amendment to bring our community together and explain to them what's really happening.
So would that be a different vote, or is that, because one's a resolution opposing the public charge change or amendment currently going on, taking place in October, another one is having that community discussion to educate the public?
I believe I'm clear on the direction. What I would bring back to you is a draft resolution that has a whereas in there, that we're committed to educating our community. So I think I can cover both of them in the same resolution.
Okay. Councilmember Solario?
I just want to make, you know, one clarifying point. Most of our community understand very well what President Trump is attempting to do, and how it's harmful to immigrant communities in cities like ours. So, you know, it's not like if our community is misinformed on everything, so we don't want to send a message that, you know, our community doesn't understand the policy. And for the same reason, you know, Congressman Correa understands what's going on, that's why he's here in support of this, and Councilmember Penialosa, I and others, understand exactly what's going on, and we want to oppose this direction by the administration.
All right, so if you want to oppose, I think we already had a vote, it was four zero. Do you want to vote again? Let's vote again. Those in favor, press green.
And Mayor Pulido, if you would please.
I did. All right, next, now we go to 85C, Mayor Protem de Yegas.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If I can have Chief, Deputy Chief Kaminsky up at the podium. So I would like a Quality of Life Team update on the homeless issue here in the City of Santa Ana. If you can give us just an overview of what's going on currently.
And then I'd like councilmen maybe ask questions and things.
Yes, well, I would have further comment after I speak.
All right, go ahead.
Thank you, council, for the opportunity to speak tonight. In January of 2018, a two-week pilot program was established. We called it COLT, the Quality of Life Team. That team met four days a week, Monday through Thursday, from 9:00 in the morning until 4:00 PM. There was some Friday coverage. COLT was born out of a need to bring virtually every city department to bear on the impacts associated with the homeless problem. COLT originally consisted of, one permanently assigned heart police officer, three overtime police officers, assigned to outreach, engagement, security, and enforcement, one code enforcement officer to address homeless impacts on private property, one city attorney to deal with risk mitigation and municipal code evaluation, one public works maintenance supervisor, four public works maintenance workers to clean up trash and debris, one park and rec supervisor, one park and rec staff member to store abandoned property, and four County of Orange outreach workers. They were to provide homeless engagement and assistance. The two-week pilot program continued. In 2018, or over the course of the 48 weeks of 2018, COLT responded to 1,436 locations, contacted 2,850 people, attended to 1,642 encampments, identified the property of people, then stored property for 141 different individuals, disposed of 901 shopping carts, disposed of 492 needles, and collected 392 tons of debris. I think it's important to understand that one ton equals 2,000 pounds. So in essence, the COLT team in 2018 collected 784,000 pounds of trash and debris. Over time, the COLT concept had to change. This was a temporary, two-week pilot project. With that being said, COLT continues to this day, and it has slightly altered. The team continues to work four days a week, Monday through Thursday, nine to four. COLT currently is comprised of, one permanently assigned heart police officer, three overtime police officers, still responsible for outreach, engagement, security, and enforcement. The one code enforcement officer permanently assigned is now only with the team on an as-needed basis, and is generally responsible for working on the railroad, as well as the, some large-scale private property issues that COLT addresses. The one city attorney that was permanently assigned is now only assigned on an as-needed basis. One public works maintenance supervisor and four public works maintenance workers continue to clean up trash and debris. The one park and rec supervisor is now only needed on an as-needed basis, and park and rec supplies one staff member to coordinate the storage of abandoned property. Also of note, the four County of Orange outreach workers have been downsized to two. That's because the County of Orange indicated to the City of Santa Ana that they have found greater needs throughout the County of Orange, and they took those resources from us.
How many did they take?
Two. We only had four.
Four and two.
Here to date, the COLT team has responded to 757 locations, addressed 802 encampments, disposed of 502 shopping carts, collected 301 tons of debris, or close to 602,000 pounds of trash and debris. Speaking for enforcement efforts, I know that that's of a high importance to the council. And just to speak to three months, how many individuals were cited for violating municipal codes over the last three months? The answer is 288. How many people have been arrested for non-warrant-related arrests? 101. How many people have been taken into custody for outstanding warrants? That answer was 63. And lastly, since the inception of the link, and all the individuals that have referred from the COLT team to the link, over 60 individuals have received long-term permanent supportive housing placements out of the link. That's my opinion, sir.
Thank you, Deputy Chief Kaminsky. And, sir, if you could stay for a couple of minutes, I have a few questions, and I'm sure my colleagues have some questions. With all them numbers that you just read, it still feels like we haven't done much here in the city. And I know we are trying, we are short-staffed, I know we have to work with the county when it comes to this issue. I understand we have people coming from out of town, we've been getting sued, we're still in court now, we have a few things pending, and we are still trying to sort all of that out. But in your opinion, Deputy Chief Kaminsky, if you could, you know, if you could change something with this Quality of Life Team, the COLT Team, what would that be, to have more of an effect? Because my colleagues and I are a little tired of seeing what's going on here, and the residents also. And I understand the situation, you know, they're working four days a week, is that correct?
Yes, sir, it is.
Four days a week. And we have people out there 24 hours a day, seven days a week. So, we're not really addressing it too much. How many people are on the current COLT Team at a time, when you send them out? On an average?
10 people plus two outreach workers from the county, so a total of 12, 10 city staff.
Okay, very good. And they're Monday through Friday, and I understand that some of the cleanup jobs that we need to undertake should be night operations also, as in going into the parks, and so on and so forth, certain areas, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so that's, that's day and night, and we only have, is there anyone permanently assigned to the COLT Team, and that's all you do? That's all they do? Is this team goes out, and, or they, they show up, or they alternate? Is it different employees coming in? Or is it a certain group? Say, "You're here, and this is your job, this is the mission, you go out and you address this issue."
So the police officer or heart officer is permanently assigned to the COLT Team. The public works supervisor is permanently assigned to the Quality of Life Team. The park and rec individual rotates, but they always staff the position. And the public works maintenance workers, I think they're running like a month-long shift, where they'll work that for about a month. But there are two, per se, staff members that are permanently assigned.
So, to increase the efforts, what, in your opinion, do you believe you would change on this, or add?
Well, sir, the city manager gave staff some quite specific instructions as to what she was interested in having us look at, and that was contracted employees. And to this day, I believe that her concepts surrounding contract employees are probably the best and most effective and efficient way to answer to this crisis in the most time-efficient manner.
So, contract employees as in?
Contractors.
Contract workers.
Yes, sir.
So we need workers, we need equipment, we need vehicles to move, how many pounds of debris did?
In year one, it was 784,000, and year-to-date, it's 602,000, year-to-date, pounds.
That's, that's, that's a lot. And that was, it's just with our regular COLT Team that we have operating right now at the moment.
That's just the COLT Team, not anything else.
And as I look around the city, this issue is still out there everywhere, and it's tough to address. And I want to thank you, I know you've been doing a lot of work on this, you know, leading the charge. I know you go to Judge Carter's courtroom, and you represent us there, and I want to thank you, Deputy Chief. And I just want to help. This council wants to help, because many of us are, we're a little tired of this. Got to, we have to address it, we need to change. And thank you, sir. And, you know, I want to ask my colleagues here, that if you want to make a comment, if you want to, if you feel that you need some change, then I think we should speak up right now. Because I want to make sure, the reason that I'm bringing this here tonight is because I want all the directors, and all the departments at the city, and I don't really see any, there's one over there, there's a tie, you know, I've got the police chief here, and I thank you all, but I need public works, I need parks and recs, I need all the-
Code enforcement.
Code enforcement, although they're doing a great job, but they're so- Code enforcement, although they're doing a great job, but they're so understaffed, but, you know, God bless them. I need this city leadership to understand that the homeless issue, addressing this is a priority. We've been saying it, but now I'm going to say it publicly and I don't like to call people out. Deputy Chief Kaminsky was great to come out here and give us an update, but, uh, all of my colleagues feel the same. And the leadership here needs to understand that things have to change. And we put, the, the voters of San Ana voted on measure X and money went there and we need to see that money be pushed on this issue. Needs to be addressed, needs to be, you know, allocated. And I mean like tomorrow, tomorrow. I know our city manager has a plan and they're working on it, but I just want to voice this to everyone who's watching and my colleagues feel the same way. And I'm going to let them have their say right now, but, uh, you know, the city staff need to understand that this is a priority. We're talking about quality of life for the entire city. Everyone is fed up. I know we have the courts to deal with, I know we have outside activists coming out, that most of them don't even live here, but they try to tell us how to do things here and I'm just tired of it. And I'm asking my colleagues to stand with me to make sure that, make this a priority, we need to change. Whatever the city manager needs, I would like to, uh, to, you know, to-
To be supportive.
Supportive.
Thank you for that, Councilman Losa, and then Solario, and then I've got Tomasz and then Iglesias.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree with Mayor Protem Villegas, this is, uh, I know you guys are doing a fantastic job with Deputy Chief Kaminsky, but we could always do better and do more. Uh, and what, when my colleague was talking about, you know, all the different department heads, you know, um, Mr. Mintai, if you're on your way to, to see a, a future project site and you see something along the way, call somebody, make a note of it. If you don't have the time to do it then, same with all of our police officers that are out patrolling, if you guys see something, please make note of it. If you don't have that time to pull over immediately, I'm not asking you to do that, make a note, make sure somebody addresses it at the end of the day. Uh, Daisy, if you're on your way to pick up census balloons, I don't know what you do throughout the day, but I know you do a lot, but, and you see something, I'm, I'm kidding, that was a joke, she does a many, many things.
No, but she's calling too.
Yeah, but you should also, hey, you know what, there's somebody camping out on a private lot, somebody address it. My water guys, our water guys, I'm sorry, same thing. You guys are out doing maintenance at somewhere, fixing up something, make a note of whatever you guys see along the way. I see it throughout the city, I live here full, I live, I would hope we all live here, I live in the city and, and I work in the city full-time. So I, I drive around all day long in San Ana, I never leave, uh, and, and it just seems like every, every issue that the community is facing is just slapping me in the face everywhere I go. And there's been times when I'm driving behind police officers or driving behind the, uh, code enforcement or, or a public works truck and I see crazy, crazy stuff happening on the side of the sidewalks, trash cans flipped over and just a mess. And I would, you know, I'd drive by the next day and it's still there. I drive by two days later, it's still there. That trash can's still flipped over, that, that, that mangled bench, bus bench is still on the side of the sidewalk that, and, and nothing seems to get cleaned up or picked up. So, and that's what, what we mean by everybody, you know, it's, uh, I keep using that example when I worked at Disneyland at sixteen years old, where we were encouraged, if you're walking from, even though you work in, selling churros, you're walking by, you pick up a piece of trash that you see on the ground because that's, this is, you take ownership of where you work or where you live and I encourage you all of you guys to please, please, uh, do that. Yeah, use a, use the app, uh, the My San Ana app, I encourage everybody to download as well to, to report things like graffiti and potholes and debris and trash. I know, uh, October's coming up, October first, Madam City Manager, or are we? For a new app.
That's our goal.
It's a more, uh, user-friendly and updated app that would be, uh, updated constantly and, and work with across the board with all the departments. So that's, that's what we mean here and, and thank you Mayor Protem for bringing this item forward. Um, and those are my comments.
Councilman Solario?
Yes, sir. Thank you, uh, a few things first, thank you, uh, Councilmember Villegas for, for bringing this forward. I know we all have a, a lot of interest. You might remember when we were looking at the budget, particularly in June, uh, that I, and I think others to some extent felt like of the new sixty million dollars in measure X, that very little was going to homeless in particular. Uh, you know, I, you know, I did get a little bit of a, of a pause and, uh, staff did add in a couple of more dollars, but the reality is that the quality of life team by and large did an increase. The first real meaningful increase will happen because we added in an earlier item, you know, a million new dollars to augment it, so, so that is good. The quality of life team work is at fantastic, it's comprehensive, but it really needs to be times a factor of five or ten really to make a, a, a meaningful dent. Uh, in, in the report, there were a few things that concerned me that were, they're troubling, uh, number one, uh, on, on the PD side, you know, I like that one is kind of permanently aside, but for the two or three others, the support for them to be overtime, this is now a permanent job. I mean, I know we thought initially it was a temporary thing, but, you know, that means we should staff it with, you know, police officers that can just do it at not, you know, time and a half overtime, but a regular time as, as, as a regular beat. I was also troubled to hear that the county apparently is pulling back on some of its employees. Uh, that's not good, so that really means that the general quality of life team is going to do less work. Uh, fortunately, our city attorney, I mean, our city manager did, uh, get the team to, in addition to the night and four schedule, have some evening and weekend shifts, so that will be additional and, and, and that is, uh, very positive. The million dollars that I just mentioned, uh, is positive. I agree that contracting out, particularly with nonprofits or others, is a good way to go. And I know that, you know, over a year ago, I asked Mercy House if they could do something like that and they can, and so some of these solutions have been out there, we just haven't done them. Uh, and then finally, uh, you know, this requires an all-hands approach. We have a big city with a lot of staff and we have a few folks working on it, but this issue in town is by far the most important issue to every resident in this town. They're all hungry for more work, they now feel like they're, since April, they've been taxed, uh, for sales tax for something that they thought was going to largely go to homeless services. You know, it's now, you know, about six months almost and they've seen nothing new. Uh, you know, really the big first meaningful thing I think they're going to see is the park security, uh, program that's going to start, uh, September twentieth, so that's very positive. But we need to have a sense of urgency, I mean, all this stuff needs to happen yesterday and it may mean, you know, reassign positions, reclassify positions, move more so they can be part of this, this team and maybe other projects can be slowed down or deferred a year or two. There, there's no issue more important right now in the city than this, uh, and it requires action, but also dollars. So I, you know, as I've asked before, you know, every new dollar that comes in, we got to grab it and appropriate it for this, including the state dollars. I know that, uh, Mr. Mayor with other, other mayors and, and the legislature and the governor, uh, there's some pretty serious homeless service dollars and housing dollars coming from Sacramento. We need to start programming that now, not, you know, waiting until we get it and then another month to do a plan and, you know, we'll see something on the ground a year from now. It's, uh, it's, it's, it's just not enough and we got to have a bigger sense of urgency.
Councilmember Iglesias?
So I just have a couple clarifying questions. Who does the Colt team report to?
The homeless efforts are led under our community development department where you added the position of a homeless, uh, services manager.
So it'll be under Mr. Mendoza?
Correct.
Then, under the, okay. So I, I know when I send emails to you, I usually send them to Fuad and thank Fuad that he forwards it over to the right person. But, um, have we strategically said, okay, we're going to have for the Colt team like one person from, um, uh, the public works, some from code enforcement, so, uh, one from the police? And one, and I, and I get the, um, police coming, you know, to Colt under the overtime, but is there a possibility for us to, um, have somebody, um, like a, a person that's not, I would say, a sworn officer to be part of the security to go with them so we can kind of, you know, get it going faster?
Um, I'm really, I've mentioned earlier and I'm looking forward to, at the next council meeting, we're going to give a presentation to you on all the efforts that we've ramped up and what our action plan is and what we're going to be moving forward in the future. So, uh, DC just, Kaminsky just spoke on just a few of the elements that we're using to address homelessness. The Colt team does have other people assigned to it that are not sworn officer, but the one missing element in San Ana is the nonprofit component of it. So your officers are a, a needed component of the Colt team, but after addressing a certain homeless individual, if there's not a criminal act, if there's not a warrant, if there's not a probation violation, you want those resources freed up and that's where a nonprofit can supplement. One of the other things is mentioned is the addition of contractors. Right now, if there is debris left behind and an officer encounters it, let's say at ten o'clock at night, he doesn't have public works to call to come and do the cleanup. You can have a contractor on call twenty-four seven to do that. So I'm really looking forward to giving you the presentation at your next council meeting that will give you a more comprehensive look on everything that has been added, things that have been increased and future plans to increase it. I do realize that this is the most depressing issue facing our city and under your direction, I, we are considering it a very high priority. And I realize it's taken me a little bit of while to deploy a lot of the things, but just to remind you, we bought new equipment, we hired new, well, we added code enforcement positions, we added maintenance workers positions, so we, we have been adding additional resources. It is just taking some time to deploy it.
So just one more thing before I get back to you is, um, I know one thing that we're trying to do is improve our parks and we, we do have the security going in there, but my thing is let's not invest so much in trying to get nice things because unless we address the homeless issue or the, I don't call it homeless, unsheltered because some individuals choose to live that way. Um, unless we address that, then there's no sense in having nice parks and stuff because they, they've come and they've really messed up a lot of, a lot of our restrooms and a lot of our, you know, things that we use as residents. So also I would like to have like parks and recs also look into that, how, how is it that they're addressing that issue when it comes to, to dealing with the quality of life with our, with our residents?
Mayor Protem?
Thank you. Ms. City Manager, how soon are, are those, uh, ideas going to be implemented?
Um, there's our proposal request out right now for contractors, there's hiring going on right now for maintenance workers. Um, we have already shifted the Colt team as mentioned by Councilmember Solario. We did a pilot program where we went, the team went out at dusk, that happened on August twenty-first and they had twenty-seven contacts with individuals. In the month of September, we sent out in the notable communication where we have, uh, like seven different special Colt team events planned in addition to the Monday through Thursday, nine to four. So it is already starting to happen.
Thank you. I also, uh, ask you, and you heard me earlier and I'm, uh, making sure I speak, uh, with you regarding this, make sure that your directors understand that this issue is a priority for this council.
Will do.
Please, thank you, thank you.
All right, let me, um, add something to this. And that is that I see this as like part of a broken window theory. You have a building, it's got a broken window, you don't fix it, now you have graffiti, now you have break-ins, now you have more crime. And, and the homeless, unfortunately, it kind of sets a negative image and a negative standard. And so I know sometimes say, well, we can't have a police officer stop because we're taking away from very important work. I almost think, what is more important right now? I, I think it's extremely important, you have somebody sleeping at a, uh, O C T A bus stop and they're there and they're there for many, many hours, it's hurting everybody, it's hurting the adjacent businesses, it's hurting, you know, the people that are on the bus that are trying to go about their business. It, it, it's like the whole thing breaking down, so if a police officer stops and says you can't sleep here, um, that to me would be more important than, you know, going about the regular business. I know there's a lot of important things, I know there's burglaries, I know there's, you know, their response to calls, I know there's patrol, I know there's the investigation unit, I mean, there's a lot of things our PD does, but I think one of the most important would be intervening with homeless and trying to figure out what can we do to, you know, get these individuals to move on. Now, I know some will go to the shelter. Part of what I do on a regular basis, I stop. I typically call Deputy Chief Kaminsky and I said like, I need a unit out here because I talk to the homeless, I tell them, oh, do you really, because they're sitting there with a sign that says shelter and food. And I said, do you really want shelter and food? Because if that's the goal, we can get you that, get you off the street, then they look at you like, well, what's the catch? Well, you're going to have to go to a shelter and you can't take drugs. Some don't want to go. Some say, forget it, I want food and I want, you know, shelter, but I want it on my terms. Well, you can't have them on your terms. But guess what? Some do want to go. Some do want to go and some get in the car and they're driven off and they're doing better. Some are in the shelter for a period of time, then they get a job and they're actually no longer homeless, they're back as productive members of society. So there, there's a lot of different facets to this. And, and I just think we need to, you know, attack it, know that it's multifaceted, know that it's really tough, but we need to attack it, we can't just say we can live with it because we can't. We can't, it's never been this bad. I know it's not just San Ana, I know I go down to, you know, San Clemente and they're complaining about too many homeless. Laguna Beach is mad about too many homeless. You know, Newport Beach is looking at some shelters to figure out how to handle it. But right now, I think we have more than our fair share. Um, very few of these individuals are from San Ana and some are not even from Orange County, yet they end up here and they become our, our own. So we have to, you know, tackle it aggressively. I think we have to settle with the defendants and I know we, we are in the process of doing that. So we settle with, uh, I mean, with the plaintiffs, you know, the Catholic worker in that group so that we can enforce aggressively without getting sued. Because I remember once we sued about seven, uh, individuals, we incarcerated them, we got sued, we paid out seventy thousand dollars per homeless person, times seven, that was four hundred and ninety thousand dollars that did absolutely nothing. We can't waste money that way. And some of these homeless may not have homes, but they have lawyers. And those lawyers are very aggressive. And that's the reality, that's what, that's what we face when we go out there and try to, you know, be aggressive. So, um, I, I think let's maybe bring this back, I know it probably should be going to some of the different committees and all that. We did appropriate a million dollars today. I'd say let's go through that money as effectively and as fast as possible. The goal is not to make the million dollars last, the goal is to spend them quickly to make the homeless problem diminish significantly so that our residents in our community can see some immediate relief. So with that, I, I think we've all said our piece. Um, let's go on to the next item. Public comment, uh, Dwayne Kelly, followed by Wendy Aragon, followed by Carol Barnes. Go ahead, please.
I left some, uh, VIP reception invitations and brief organization on your desk. Please respond to the email or phone number on the invitation if you are willing to attend. Uh, mayor and council members, staff and citizens, uh, my name is Dwayne Kelly. I'm a representative for Grotius Music Foundation. Uh, we're a nonprofit that looks to bettering our community and cultivating our leaders, our future leaders, uh, through music, community service and volunteering. Uh, one of our biggest projects is hosting large concerts that features orchestra, uh, orchestra performers and musicals. Um, currently, we aid youth with resources such as instruments, after-school programs that cater to piano, violin, acoustic guitar and vocalist training. Uh, we are in the business to strengthen music ambitions of our youth. Grotius Music Foundation believes in the power of music and its influence in the community. Uh, recently, we have aligned with another nonprofit called IOAF and adopted, uh, a mindset program for our police officers and firefighters. We host cultural exhibitions for the community, we hold language classes and gather hundreds of youth volunteers intern, uh, to do international, uh, work, uh, through English camps in Mexico, Haiti and Korea. Uh, the reason why I've come to you all today is to invite the mayor, council members, uh, and everyone here to the Christmas cantata featuring the world's famous Grotius Choir. everyone here to the Christmas Cantada featuring the world's famous Grotius Choir. They're an orchestra choir group composed of 120 performers. They have won first place in the most elite competitions in Switzerland, Italy, and Germany. The goal of this group is to bring joy to you guys. Grotius Choir is currently on a one-month tour, traveling 29 cities across the United States. They'll be coming to Long Beach Terrace Theater on the 29th of September, performing a 3:00 PM and 7:00 PM show called the Christmas Cantada. Wherever we host the Christmas Cantada, we bring joy to the people who watch it. As citizens of the city enter theaters, they have complaints of family members, some cases depression from tragic moments in their lives, but as they exit from watching the show, their faces are bright with smiles of joy. In the near future, we want to bring this Cantada to your city, bringing joy to the people of Santa Ana. Mayor, councilmembers, please come to our Christmas Cantada and VIP reception, Sunday 29th. Grotius Music Foundation wants to partner with the city of Santa Ana and bring programs that can make our people happy and give them opportunity to share happiness with others.
Thank you, Duane. Your time is up. Fast.
Okay. I invite you to the VIP reception at 5:00 PM at the Terrace Theater in between 3:00 PM and 7:00 PM showings. Learn about what we can do for our community and our city. Look into our website, it's grotiusmusicfoundation.org. For anyone else who interested, I currently have flyers for the Christmas Cantada at Long Beach Terrace Theater. The seats are reserved through donation, please talk to me after for details. Thank you.
Thank you. Wendy, followed by Carol Barnes.
Okay, good evening, Mayor and City Councilmembers. I just wonder, after hearing all about the homeless problem in Santa Ana, believe me, I live in Long Beach and we have the same problem, I know it's everywhere, but is it coincidental that I'm here to talk about homeless animals in Orange County and Santa Ana? And often the two are connected, unfortunately. I am president of a longstanding organization in California, Pet Assistance Foundation, which was founded in 1956 to combat the tragic pet overpopulation problem, with the realization that the pet overpopulation problem is the root cause of so much companion animal suffering. Pet Assistance is a true grassroots organization. We manage a hotline across Southern California which connects compassionate residents with information, resources, and direct support to address the needs of their companion animals. We are, without a doubt, an organization that has our ears to the ground. Currently, we're receiving disturbing reports from Orange County residents, including residents in Santa Ana, voicing grave concerns about policies of Orange County animal shelter. The calls mainly refer to abuses of a program designed to manage cat overpopulation, referred to as RTF or Return to Field Program. This program is carried out, when this program is carried out with how strict adherence to program standards, RTF can be cruel, abusive, ineffective, and possibly illegal. We are here tonight because we believe you need to be informed about what is happening in your community. The main goal of PAF, of Pet Assistance Foundation, is to prevent animal suffering, which should be the primary goal of any shelter. You should know that RTF, the RTF program is an outgrowth of the No Kill Movement, which has greatly divided the humane community across the nation and led to profound animal suffering in shelters and communities throughout this county. OCAS declared itself No Kill in late 2018. Basically, No Kill is focused on the flawed premise that pet overpopulation is a myth and that there are homes for millions of unwanted animals. Typically, this flawed premise has led to a tremendous miseducation of the public. Everyone likes to hear the words "No Kill." That's the panacea for everything. Serious and cruel overcrowding and warehousing of animals in shelters, hoarding by misguided rescue organizations.
Wendy, if you could please wrap up.
Sure. Okay. Now, what we would like to do is, there are real problems with what we call dumping of these animals in Santa Ana. And we have people here to testify here of what's happening and we would like to provide you with information, I'd like to-
Just get it to our city manager.
Yeah.
So you're basically saying it's better to kill them than to let them suffer?
No, no, we're not saying that at all. We just want a sensible problem. No, we're not saying that at all. That's what the general public will bring up, but that's not the issue at all. Pet overpopulation is a complex societal problem that needs to be addressed in a particular way for each community and for the individual animals in the shelter.
All right, we'll give our city manager your information.
Okay.
Carol Barres, Barnes, followed by Paul Cook Giles.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just add really-
Yes.
I would like to take this moment to encourage all Santa Ana residents to neuter and spay your animals, please. I mean, that's something that, that's where it starts as well, so.
Hi, my name is Carol Barnes and I'm here to talk to you about Orange County animal care because literally they are throwing out cats and kittens onto your streets, Tuesday, Thursdays, and Saturdays. I was a volunteer there and I'm firsthand, I've done trapping, I've been out there. You are second only to Anaheim with a problem of roaming cat population. And it's from September to, yeah, September to June, they threw out 1,000 cats onto the streets. They do little to no outreach to make sure that these cats are fed, are looked after. It's really a travesty. I don't know how you can't say that it's not abandonment because that's exactly what it is. And these animals suffer. Trust me, I'm out there and I see it and I've sat across from the director and I said, "You might as well call this the coyote feeding program because that's what you're doing." I mean, you've probably heard that there's an increase in the urban coyote population? Well, they're feeding them with cats. And by the way, I suggested, and other people have suggested, that they have a trapping program. They don't do that. There's nothing proactive, folks. They don't encourage people to trap, they don't educate the people. Right now, they are just literally throwing them out. That's how he's emptying his shelter. And I went there one day to see a cat that's, basically, I didn't want it to be put out on the street. I went to go get it and then I found out that she got adopted. Then I found out from a volunteer there, she was upset. I said, "What's the problem?" He said, "Well, they're gonna put one of my moms out." And I said, "Well..." She said, "She's sick." They knew she was sick, they fixed her anyway, and now they're gonna put her out on the street. And I go in there, heads down in the bin, and I said, "Maybe we should keep her for a while?" "No, she'll be fine, just put her out." This is all about live release. This is what they want. As long as they get that animal out, they don't care what happens to them outside. And then I said, "Well, maybe I should go up to the house, that address, and talk to them." "No, don't do that because they might not want her back." I mean, clearly, they're just ditching them. There's another instance where I went out with a cat and this poor little thing, they held her for six days, you know, they got her, they held her for four days required, fixed her, then they decided they're gonna put her out. Santa Ana, off of Flower and Occidental. The poor little thing was trying to get into the house and someone reached out to them and they're like, "She's trying to get into the house." You know, she was born as to a stray and so my friend said, "You know, could you please keep her till she's safe and then someone will come and get her?" So I went and I got her and the little guy walked in with my carrier and she sees a carrier and runs back into the room to, because she didn't want to go, you know, she saw a carrier. So anyway, I took her and yes, she did get humanely euthanized because I didn't have a place, but putting her out there so she can get hit by a car or eaten by a coyote, or worse, by the way, people that don't want the people and the cats in the community-
Carol, it's red, but you're talking mainly about the county-
Yes.
-shelter?
No, but they serviced your city. Okay, they serviced your city.
But it's their policies, right?
But, but don't you have a say in what they do?
But are you talking to the county as well?
Do you not think this is abandonment, what they do?
I'm just asking, are you also talking to the county?
I'm getting there. Anaheim was my first stop because they have the largest, and you are the second one that they're dumping all these cats.
I was wondering where the point was, so.
Because it's your city too.
All right, because it's red. Got it. Thank you, Carol. Keep up the good work. I know there's a lot that needs to be done.
This man that runs it has not a clue how to, and they're suffering. And by the way, because there's no trapping, aggressive trapping, you're going to be buried in more cats.
Our city manager is taking notes as you speak.
I have, I have some paperwork, I have some articles.
Please, leave it. Okay. Paul Cook Giles? Different subject, Paul. How are you?
Very well, Your Honor, thank you. It's been a long time since I've had the chance to address the council and I'm very happy to be here this evening. I bought my home in Santa Ana in 1998, a dilapidated condemned house in French Park. I became an active member of our neighborhood association, served as its president, ran our home tours, chaired Comm Link for two years, and chaired our city's Historic Resources Commission for eight.
And you're active at the Church of the Messiah for-
I am, in fact. And that was exactly where I was going next, but since you said it, I don't have to.
You got it.
I am not here to toot my own horn about my involvement with matters of faith and religion. I am aware that the council directed the city staff to come back with a proposal for installing the city seal and a plaque bearing the motto "In God We Trust" in council chambers. And I want to tell you that slapping signs that say "In God We Trust" on public buildings is not a prayer that everybody who sees them will become a Christian, and if it is, they shouldn't be there. They're not a sign that our deliberations are going to be steeped in scripture, and if they are, whose scripture are we talking about? One of the speakers two weeks ago who supported the installation of this sign greeted the city council as brothers and sisters in Christ. What message does that send to the Jewish residents of Santa Ana? That their rights to petition their government will be recognized and protected? Do the Buddhist citizens of our city hear that they stand equally with every other citizen before their council? Will the atheist citizens of Santa Ana think that they will be welcomed into a chamber where a sign says "Here, we believe in God"? I applaud the desire to place the city council, the city seal, in our council chambers and I encourage you to consider placing our national motto alongside it, our original motto, not the one that was adopted in 1956 at the height of Joseph McCarthy's Anti-American Activities Campaign. The witch hunt that blacklisted countless actors and writers and producers and artists and gay people. The motto that was part of the effort to differentiate ourselves from the godless communism of the Soviet Union. I speak of the motto that was adopted in 1782, "E Pluribus Unum," "Out of Many, One." What better motto for a city and a nation whose greatest strength is the immigrants who came here from all corners of the world, from every tribe, of every tongue, and every faith, and no faith, seeking a better life for themselves and their children who became and are becoming Americans? Let our actions and our signs be proof of our welcome to everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Judy Bishop, followed by Dale Helvig.
Hello. I just wanted to add that I also trap cats in Santa Ana and I'm working with them on the Return to Field Program and most of your residents do not want these cats back. So it's really a problem as to, you know, if the shelter isn't going to house them and find a solution, and you have nothing else to do but bring them back. And then a lot of times residents will take matters into their own hands. I've seen cats that are poisoned or they get hit by cars, you know, it's really a problem. The fleas, I mean, just all of it. It's, and I just feel the shelter isn't doing its job. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for your input, we're listening. Dale?
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers and city staff. I just wanted to say that I think two signs of a healthy city are getting your hands around the homeless issue, which you guys have talked about a lot because that affects quality of life. The other thing that I think, among many other things, that affect the quality of life and dictate a healthy city is the parks and having active parks where kids can get out and play. Councilman Solario brought forward the youth presidents of the soccer teams, but that is in jeopardy, I think, as we continue to develop the city. We, you know, over the last 23 months that I've been coming here, we have approved project after project after project and we've never added any park acreage. We, the only thing that I remember is we, you guys approved the Mariposa Park, a renaming of a park, but we haven't developed any parks. And we're gonna eventually lose out if we continue to add all these high-story developments throughout the city. We're gonna lose the land that's going to have the park space that could have been used for the youth of the city. And pretty soon, we're gonna get to the point where the parks are gonna be overpacked and the health of the city is gonna deteriorate. So when you guys take a look at these projects, they ought to be including a little bit of park space along with it. The fees are good, but it's not taking up the land and we're gonna run out of land here pretty soon. And so I encourage you to consider that when you vote on any project in the future. Thanks.
Thank you, Dale. With that, Madam Clerk, we've already done the Housing Authority, do we need to do anything else on that?
No, Mayor.
All right, so city manager comments?
Certainly, just one item I want to talk about, and we have some pictures for your viewing pleasure, but the city conducted a very successful fiestus patreus event this last weekend. There is an estimated attendance by over 60,000 people. The crowds were delighted by performance of headliners and other performers, including our very own mayor and his family. Additions that we did this year included some shade tents with cooling fans and an ADA viewing area. Those were all new elements to better serve the attendees. Feedback from the carnival operators and food vendors, they were very pleased with their sales and are looking forward to returning next year. We did enhance the safety for the event through the addition of EMT service and increased levels of police support and event security services. And one of our newest tenants at the Sardic Station Border X Brewery partnered with a nonprofit and they hosted the Beer Garden, which did have to close early on Sunday because they sold out of beer. The Sunday's Parade had 124 entries with over 6,000 participants who marched down the parade route. And we were out there in full force with our 150th Celebration and Census 2020 Committees that had a very strong presence and participated with the floats on the parade. So I do want to take this time to really thank the amazing staff that we have here at our city that worked very hard and did an amazing job coordinating and working this event. They logged a lot, a lot of hours, but it did show in the success of the event.
Thank you for that and I know that, I think you were yourself a participant, you drove a car for Councilwoman Vince Sarmiento, I believe. So with that, with no incident, I might add. No incident, no accident, no nothing. Council comments, Councilwoman Jose Solario?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Three things. First, I know you'll be hearing from, you know, various councilmembers and our mayor likely on Facebook and social media promoting the 150th big celebration, the one that really is close to the birth date, on October 7th from 3:00 to 9:00 at the Centennial Education Center, I'm sorry, what's the date?
27th.
27th. I thought I said the 27th, that's what I wrote on my notes.
You said the 7th, Ceci said the 17th, eventually you'd be right.
October 27th, 3:00 to 9:00, Centennial Park. You'll be hearing more about it, you know, via, you know, social media. That's gonna be, you know, a grand event and I'm pleased that, you know, First American and other groups have been brought in to help with that. Second, September 20th, you know, we should be seeing the start of the new park security program. I think that's good and I would ask of your- I think that's good, and I would ask VR City Manager if maybe we could do a press release, you know, with quotes from the council that supported that program, that's gonna start on September 20th, as was suggested by some of the council members, including Councilmember Benja Losa as well. The uniforms by the individuals, and they'll be patrolling parks, bike trails. The uniforms will have their own company seal, Allied Universal Security, but also a Santa Ana city seal. Same with their vehicles, so that'll be a positive thing. And then finally, and I know that the ladies have already left, and I do plan on following up, I am concerned about the animal shelter issues that they raised, and maybe somebody on staff can provide us an update and see what we might be able to do, and if there are releases of, you know, cats and pets and other things into our city. We ought to care about that, and I think we do pay into that animal shelter, so it is a city issue as well. And so, you know, hopefully we can get a city report, and I'll follow up with the ladies as well. Thank you.
Councilor Beat Benja Losa, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree with the, with working with the number of shelters and releasing of the animals, the cats and the dogs into our streets, but more in my priority is working with our county jail and the release of inmates into our Santa Ana streets. All the South County people that are being arrested and brought to our city and then released in our streets is a serious problem that we need to get to the bottom of. Regards to this past weekend Fiesta de Patrias, very, very great turnout, very happy. I know staff was out there as early as 5:00, 6:00 in the morning, and there till 10:00, 11:00 o'clock at night, so very thankful for all of you guys for a successful event. I would just like to add, and I know that Councilwoman Iglesias will agree, that September 15th and 16th, and I believe the 14th, is usually the Independence Day. I know the 16th is Mexico's, but you have all of these Central American countries that are also celebrate their Independence Day on the 14th, and 15th, and the 16th. And, you know, my best friends are from El Salvador, and I got ants from Nicaragua that, you know, through marriage, obviously, and, but they also brought it up, and there was a lot of chatter amongst the people at the, at the event that said, "Hey, this is awesome that you guys do this, but, you know, I'm from Honduras, I'm from Nicaragua, I'm from El Salvador, and I don't feel, I don't feel like it's inclusive of our culture." There was comments on my Facebook about people from Central America wanting to go to Los Angeles, their Fiesta de Patrias events, because they do include all the Central American countries, you know, and that would be something to keep in mind for next year, Madam City Manager and staff, to make sure that we, we work with those other cultures and communities in our city, to make sure that they are included as part of the celebration. And there, it was a great event, very excited for what's to come with the remaining of the 150th anniversary. I still haven't seen the street banners. We were told it was gonna come first week in September, or second week in September. At this point, I mean, it's like, why even do it? You know, they're expensive, they're, I'm not sure if they've been ordered or not, but I would like to, they should have been up months ago, not sure what the holdup is, but that is something that I was thinking about. And the other thing is, I wanna thank our police department and our first responders for, you know, the, it's been a crazy last couple of weeks, very unfortunate events in our city, very sad events that shouldn't be happening, and, you know, my condolences to all the families affected, and just wanted to thank our police department. I mean, just this morning, they had a very, very busy day, and that came to a good outcome, had a good outcome. So just wanted to know that I thank all of you guys for your work. And final thought is, Madam City Manager, regards to the resolution with the 85B item, I would, I didn't know if that direction was given, but I would like to see this come back in two weeks, because these changes are taking place in mid-October, and I wanna make sure we get that resolution out there before those changes take place. And with that said, happy birthday to Daisy. It's her birthday today, and she's here. I told her to ditch the meeting, but she chose to be here, so happy birthday, and thank you for all the work that you did as well this past weekend. That's it.
Thank you. Councilor Iglesias, please.
So I just wanna say that I attended the Fiesta de Patrias Parade, and I do agree with how Councilmember, Councilmember Benja Losa said about being inclusive of other Latin American countries. I wore my white and blue, because I was born in El Salvador, but, you know, also a U.S. citizen, so one of the things that I would also ask for next year, if it's something that we could start looking at, is to doing the same type of parade, but for the 4th of July. I believe it's something that we also owe it to our community for us to start also celebrating the history of this, this great country. So it'll be an opportunity for us to come together too, and I know it'll be well-attended, because parades are usually well-attended. And so let me know how I can help in those two, you know, including Central American countries in Fiesta de Patrias, and how we can get the 4th of July going. Also, I would like to thank staff for being very proactive in what you do, and getting us all there on time for the parade, and all the great work that you do. And I know that Daisy just doesn't only get balloons out, but she gets a lot of things going. So I just want, I know, I know. So I just wanted to tell you happy birthday to Daisy. So maybe we should have brought balloons for her today.
I know, we should've.
But thank you for all, for all you guys do, and have a great rest of the week, and I'll see you guys in two weeks.
Thank you. Mayor Protem, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Happy birthday, Daisy. I wanna thank you for all the hard work that you did on the, you and all of the staff, city manager's office, all of the employees, our police department, OCFA, everyone who was involved to make this event, which is the biggest event that we have in Santa Ana, safe and fun for everyone. It was a very, very great time. I also wanna thank, they don't wanna be named, they wanna remain out of the limelight, but the individuals who donated their, or loaned us the vehicles to be in the parade also. Some very expensive, classic cars that were loaned to us and with drivers, and it was just awesome. And on behalf of the city, we thank you for helping us out and making a great success. Thank you, everyone. I hope everyone had a great time, that whoever attended the event, Fiesta de Patrias. And when is the date for the, our next Centennial Park? It's October?
October 27th.
October 27th, yes. You know, keep an eye out for that invitation, for that event celebrating 150 years. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Just a couple of thoughts. One is on the Fiesta de Patrias, the reason we made it Patrias with plural is so that it would be inclusive. And in other years, we have had, I know the council from Bolivia, and we've had councils from, I think, Costa Rica, and different countries represented within the event. So I, I think there's not a desire to exclude anybody. I think we just have to collectively, as a community, you know, go to, you know, Guatemala, or Central America, or South American countries, and invite them all, because that, we've had them in the past. So I don't know what, what happened, but now we have our new great city manager, she writes down every single thing we say, and she follows up. So I'm sure we're gonna have a whole lot of activity when, when this comes about next year. So with that, I believe this council is now adjourned, and we're relatively early. Note the time, and tell other city councils how well we got our business done.
I was gonna say, I hope she doesn't write down everything I say, because I-
She does, and she listens to you. All right, thank you. Good night, everybody.